I wish to call to order the May 31st meeting of the Monroe County Board of Commissioners meeting. I will note for the record that Commissioner Lee Jones and I are present in the Nat U Hill Room, and Commissioner Julie Thomas is joining us virtually today. It's nice to see you already with us. So we'll start with the Commissioners' public statement. We, the Monroe County Board of Commissioners, renew our commitment to welcome and protect the rights of all people regardless of age, race, color, creed, disability, sexual orientation, gender, gender identity, marital status, economic status, and national origin. And we affirm the right of every person to live peacefully and without fear, and we will fight and resist at every step discrimination and harmful policies, whatever their source. We also stand in support of our county public school systems, both RBB and MCCSC. At this point in the meeting, I'd like to add proclamation, and I believe that Commissioner Thomas is going to start us off.
Good morning. This is a proclamation for Wear Orange Day. Whereas on average, 120 Americans are killed each day with guns, and Americans are 25 times more likely to be killed with guns than people in other high-income countries. And in Indiana, which has some of the weakest gun laws in the country, firearms are the leading cause of death for children and teens.
And gun suicide claims the lives of almost 24,000 people in the U.S. every year, and access to a gun increases the risk of death by suicide by three times. And according to Everytown for Gun Safety, there are an average of 1,086 gun deaths in Indiana every year. And support for the Second Amendment rights of law-abiding citizens goes hand in hand with keeping guns away from people with dangerous histories. And local law enforcement officers know their communities best and are the most familiar with local criminal activity and how to address it, and are best positioned to understand how to keep their citizens safe.
Oh, I'm sorry. No, no, we're good. Whereas in January 2013, Hadia Pendleton was tragically shot and killed at age 15. And on June 2nd, 2023, to recognize the 26th birthday of Hadia Pendleton, who was born June 2nd, 1997, people across the United States will recognize National Gun Violence Awareness Day and wear orange in tribute to Hadia Pendleton and other victims of gun violence, and the loved ones of those victims. And the idea for a Gun Violence Awareness Day was inspired by a group of Hadia's friends who asked their classmates to commemorate her life by wearing orange. They chose this color because hunters wear orange to announce themselves to other hunters when out in the woods, and orange is a color that symbolizes the value of human life. And by wearing orange on June 2nd, 2023, Americans will raise awareness about gun violence and honor the lives of gun violence victims and survivors. Now, therefore, we, the Monroe County Board of Commissioners, proclaim June 2nd, 2023 as Wear Orange Day, proclaimed as 31st day of May 2023 by the Monroe County Board of Commissioners. As I was prepping for some of this, I also came across a little bit startling other numbers that are just very upsetting to me. And I'd like to share with the public that as a member of Moms Demand Action, I want to let people know that if you have a handgun and want a safety lock for it, if you contact us at the Board of Commissioners, we will put you in contact with Moms Demand Action to make a free gun safety lock available for that handgun. There are other things that we didn't put in this proclamation, but every month roughly seven women are shot and killed by their partners, and 2/3 of women killed by an intimate partner are killed with a gun. And while we read the statistics on suicide, about 24,000 people in the U.S. dying every year, that's 65 people a day all across the country. Black Americans are disproportionately impacted by gun violence. There are 10 times the gun homicides and 18 times the gun assault injuries for black Americans as opposed to white Americans. And although we've already talked about the number of Americans killed, which is about 40,000 people right now, twice as many are wounded every year. This is a sad state in our country, and we would like to work to change that. So thank you all for your patience. So with that, as a lead-in to some public health, I believe gun violence is now a public health problem, and so hope that we can start to address it that way. Thank you, Ms. Kelly, for being patient with us.
Of course, thank you. So just a few updates for you this morning. In Monroe County, reported COVID cases, hospitalizations, and emergency room visits have all taken a large decrease as of May 23rd. And I thought that I would take a moment to provide you with a few general updates on some of the work that has been completed within the Health Department. These metrics reflect the work completed during the month of April. So for our Vital Records Division, 380 birth certificates were issued, 655 death certificates were issued. And our General Environmental Health Services, they completed five mosquito investigations, 25 pool inspections, 10 solid waste inspections, and four hours spent on animal bite reports. Our Wastewater Division responded to five sewage discharge complaints, five miscellaneous complaints, and 19 follow-up complaints. Four real estate septic inspections were completed and three follow-up inspections. Employees also completed seven onsite evaluations. Our Foods Division completed 64 routine inspections, responded to seven complaints, completed five pre-opening inspections, and performed six plan reviews. Our Public Health Preparedness Coordinator attended 10 trainings and spent 66 hours on updating our response plans. Our Population Health and Outreach spent a total of 135 hours on our harm reduction program and attended 15 meetings. Our Disease Intervention employees completed a total of 303 open cases. And lastly, our Futures Family Planning Clinic completed 24 annual exams and had a total of 41 patient visits for the month of April.
Thank you. Any comments, Commissioner Thomas? Commissioner Jones?
Sounds like a busy time in the Health Department.
Right, and I noticed, we had gotten the written report before, and I noticed that several of those numbers were up from the previous month.
We have been very busy.
Yes, thank you. Thank you, thank you. I also noticed the other day in the news that incidents of monkeypox are down, but that we're advised to still maintain all the correct handwashing and other kinds of things that people are recommending.
Yes, that is correct, and that is something that we are monitoring here locally.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I think we'll see you later. Is there any other department that has an update for us? Seeing none, let's move on to public comment. These are for items not on the agenda. Speakers are limited to three minutes, and if you either join us virtually or are here in person, please state your name and whether or not you're a Monroe County resident. And I see we have Mr. MG here with us. Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners, distinguished staff. Welcome to summer. I come before you not as my normal role as an advocacy, talking about issues or community events coming up, but I bring good tidings from the Chamber. It's important to note the business community's full support for our wonderful two school districts here in the county. Both MCC and RBB are not only educate our youth, but their dedication adds to the quality of a life we hold so dear in Monroe County. The Chamber has been demonstrating this through the Success School. This is an entity led by Katie Sensabaugh that focuses not only on workforce development and career readiness, but also the importance of helping children grow into the next generation of prepared community members. For almost two decades, the Chamber has been commuting businesses and school in our community. The Success School strives to help students connect to industries, companies, and the jobs that fuel their desire to learn. The school systems, the teachers they employ, and the students they mold are significant reasons why local companies can recruit from right here in our community. The Success School does this through hands-on programming, career panels, mock interviews, job shadowing, entrepreneur pitch competitions, soft skill workshops, STEM and career fairs, financial literacy, tour of opportunity, and our anchor piece, the Reality Store. This is where every junior high in our public schools navigates the burdens of adulthood as a 28-year-old, where they choose their career based on GPA. Here, they need to obtain the necessary housing, transportation, utilities, to live. Meanwhile, childcare expenses and divorce looms just around the corner. Now, to provide you a sense, since we are in the end of the school year, of the Success School impact for the 2022-23 school year in our two districts, that included 559 volunteers, a total of hours of 1723, and the number of students served, 4,342. This encompassed 52 events in our school districts. I want to thank our volunteers who not only dedicate their time, but bring their passions into the classrooms and share them with students. How can you get involved? Well, just go to the chamberblumenton.org/successschool website and learn more about what the Chamber is doing for education and our youth here in the community. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. MG. Is there any other member of the public who wishes to speak, either online or here in the Nat U Hill Room? Seeing none, let's move on to the next item.
I'm going to make a motion for two sets of minutes. This is a motion to approve the minutes for May 24, 2023, and also the May 8, 2023 Joint Executive Session Minutes.
Second. Were there any corrections or additions? I didn't see any either, so call for a vote, and because we have someone virtual, Mr. Cockrell, would you please call the roll?
Commissioner Githens.
Yes.
Commissioner Thomas.
Yes.
Commissioner Jones.
Yes.
Motion is approved, 3 to 0.
And I see that we had someone who was delayed online in raising their hand, so if you would like to go ahead and make a public comment, I don't want to butcher pronouncing your name, so please say it for us. You'll need to turn your microphone on.
Yeah, hi, I'm Ananya Mani, and I'm a resident of Monroe County. And to be more specific, a resident of Southside, where I can actually hear the cars pretty clearly on the racetrack. I do not race, and I know that noise is loud, yet I'm okay with the noise after 11:00 p.m. It is not a daily occurrence, but a few days, maybe 10 to 20 days out of 365. I have a lot of questions, but I'm sure those questions will not be answered. You know, but I would still like to ask these questions, and I'm sure even the constituents you serve know the answer. I'm not sure if any of the Commissioners reached out, or even any of the members from the Board ever bothered reaching out, asking, or listening to your constituents who live there and are okay with the noise that's coming after 11:00 p.m. If the noise ordinance has exceptions, then why is it that Bloomington Speedway, which I'm sure is probably 100 years old, does not have one? Why was that not grandfathered in? Why is this pick-and-choose policy applied here? I can agree that a few people probably might have issues with it, but imposing the feelings of a few on a majority of people who are okay with Bloomington Speedway going after 11:00 p.m. is something that's not right. I think we need to be a little more tolerant. I'm sure none of the Commissioners live there or live even close by to the track, yet you make decisions for people and businesses who still want the track to be there is something of concern to me. I believe, and I want to say this politely but firmly, that Commissioners are there to serve the constituents, and it looks like that you've become more of a disabler to the constituents you serve than an enabler. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mani.
Do you want me to briefly respond to that?
Sure.
I think a couple of things that the commenter had wrong was the 11:00 p.m. is different from everywhere else. It was 10:00 p.m. in our noise ordinance for everything else. Once that noise ordinance was put into place, there was an agreement between the Kehoney and the Speedway for that 11:00 p.m. time. So, you know, the 11:00 p.m. is nothing new. It's been there since the ordinance was established, and so this is trying to, what the Commissioners did last week was allow the sheriff and alert the sheriff that, you know, he's the one who enforces the noise ordinance at that time, and that here are the rules, because they are different than what it would be for the general public. So there has been that kind of compromise that occurred well before I was here, and I would echo that I live close enough to the racetrack that I can hear it, and it doesn't bother me either. But I think that those rules that were established at that time are what was being discussed last week, and not any new or change to those rules.
Thank you, Mr. Cockrell. And I will say that we have heard from people who support and people who disagree with the ordinance. We have heard definitely from both sides on this issue. Okay, let's move forward to the next item, please. Commissioner Thomas?
I move approval of the Claims Docket, Accounts Payable, May 24, 2023, and Payroll, June 2, 2023.
Second, and we have Carly here with us. Thank you.
The Accounts Payable Claims Docket for May 31, 2023 totals $4,616,578.51.
And the payroll?
The payroll docket for June 2, 2023 includes $1,344,054.17 in direct costs and $565,796.63 in indirect costs, for a grand total of $1,909,850.80.
Thank you. Questions or comments, Commissioner Thomas?
None, thank you.
No, I don't.
I don't either. Is there any public comment on this item? Seeing none, Mr. Cockrell, would you please call the roll on approval of the Claims Docket for Accounts Payable, May 24, 2023, and Payroll, June 2, 2023?
Commissioner Githens.
Yes.
Commissioner Thomas.
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Motion is approved, 3 to 0.
Thank you. I will note for the record that we have reports from the Clerk of the Circuit Court for April of 2023, from the Treasurer's Office for April of 2023, and from Waits and Measures that cover a period from April 16 through May 15, 2023. I always look forward to reading the Waits and Measures, because he always adds little comments about what he's been doing and explaining why he's working on certain things as weather permits, so appreciate that. So at this time, let's move on to new business. First item, please.
I move approval of entry badge reader and lock hardware relocation, fund name, Cunliffe Capital Development Fund, fund number 1138, and the amount of $3,975.
Second. And we have Mr. Kreider here. Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. Richard Kreider, Facilities and Fleet Manager. We need a new pin. This request is to approve the proposal submitted to relocate the badge reader and supporting hardware from the interior set of vestibule doors to the exterior set-
Recording in progress.
-at the main entrance of the Currie Building. Currently, the exterior entrance doors do not lock, which allow access to the vestibule at all hours of the day and night. This project will require work from three contractors. B-Tech Fire and Security will install lock hardware and relocate the badge reader in the amount of $2,090. Elite Electric LLC will install an electrical receptacle in the amount of $200. Matrix Integration will run the network cable in the amount of $1,685, for a total project cost of $3,975.
Thank you. As we reconnect here on Zoom, Commissioner Jones, do you have any comments or questions?
Just that this certainly makes sense, having that be accessible all night probably is not a good idea.
Commissioner Thomas, do you have any questions or comments?
No questions, thank you.
I am always pleased to see when we can award these kinds of contracts to local businesses as well. I think we have established a really good working relationship, and they always seem to respond very quickly when we have a need like this. So I applaud the work to bring in local folks. Is there any public comment on this item? Seeing none, Mr. Cockrell, would you call the roll for the motion for the entry for the badge reader and lock hardware relocation?
Commissioner Githens.
Yes.
Commissioner Thomas.
Yes.
Commissioner Jones.
Yes.
Motion is approved, 3 to 0.
Thank you. Next item.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kreider. Sorry.
I move approval of the E-Recording Partner Network Service Agreement.
Second. Thank you, and we have Recorder Swain here.
Good morning. Good morning. I'm Amy Swain, the Monroe County Recorder, and I'm coming to ask to get a fourth E-Recording Partner Network Service Agreement signed with EPN. We have been working with the three other major vendors here in Indiana for a number of years now. We have the consolidated interface that CSI provides with ERM Connect, and EPN, the new vendor, would flow easily into that because it aggregates all of the data from the vendors into one simple interface for the use of the auditor's office, the assessor's office, and the recorder's office. So no new equipment would be needed. This will just be another service we can provide for our customers, and it will bring in additional revenue for the county.
Very good, thank you. Commissioner Thomas, questions, comments?
None, thank you.
Mr. Jones?
No, I don't.
I don't either. It seemed very straightforward, and you did a very good job laying this all out in the packet, so appreciate that.
Thank you.
Is there any public comment on this item? Seeing none, Mr. Cockrell, would you please call the roll for the E-Recording Partner Network Service Agreement?
Commissioner Githens.
Yes.
Commissioner Thomas.
Yes.
Commissioner Jones.
Yes.
Motion is approved, 3 to 0.
Thank you. Next item, please.
I move approval of an agreement renewal, service agreement renewal with Rapid Reproductions. This is fund name, Recorder's Perpetuation, fund number 1189, and the amount of $75 a month, and 8.0875 per square foot monthly.
Second. And again, we have Recorder Swain with us.
Yes, this is a simple renewal of our service agreement with Rapid Reproductions, which is the vendor that has provided this large-format printer in our office. We use it for Platts, surveys, anything that exceeds 11 by 17, which are normal copier handles. So this is just renewing the service contract. As you can see, so far this year, we've had training, we've had hardware update, and we've also had troubleshooting when we needed it.
Questions or comments, Commissioner Thomas?
None, thank you.
No, I don't.
Well, I will note also that you've been able to fill one or two empty or open slots in your office, which is a good thing, which is part of the reason that some of this training was required, so-
Yes, we're finally fully staffed again, and it's working well.
I am sure the public appreciates that. Thank you. Is there any public comment on this? Seeing none, call for a vote on Rapid Reproductions Service Agreement Renewal. Mr. Cockrell?
Commissioner Githens.
Yes.
Commissioner Thomas.
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Motion is approved, 3 to 0.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next item, please.
I move approval of Green Hat Media LLC Service Agreement, fund name, County General, fund number 1,000, and the amount of $3,110.
Second. And we have Mr. Robertson. There he is, virtually.
Hey, good morning.
Morning. Bouncing on your ball again, aren't you?
Yeah, sorry. It's a bad habit. Yeah, so the Parks Recreation Board approved a service agreement with Green Hat Media. This is to produce a highlight video for our parks, facilities, programs, and events. So the amount is $3,110. Our intention is to utilize this video for promotional and educational purposes, an initiative to enhance department awareness. So if there are any questions, I'm happy to answer.
Commissioner Thomas?
No questions, thank you.
Commissioner Jones?
Just think it's a good idea.
I will comment that I've seen a couple of sort of examples of what can be done with this, and it's quite amazing, especially when they pull in some of the drone footage and those kinds of things, to see how we can both celebrate what we have and to push it out there, especially given that we've got new trails and other things going on in our parks. And when we get the Flatwoods redone, that'll be another thing to push out there. So I appreciate the work on this. Is there any public comment on this? Seeing none, call for a vote on the agreement with Green Hat Media LLC. Mr. Cockrell?
Commissioner Githens.
Yes.
Commissioner Thomas.
Yes.
Commissioner Jones.
Yes.
Motion is approved, 3 to 0.
Thank you, Mr. Robertson.
Thank you.
Next item.
I move approval of the amended American Rescue Plan Act, fund name, American Rescue Plan Act, fund number 8950, and the amount of $2,174,400.
Second. And we have Ms. Purdy here to talk with us.
Yes, good morning. This is an amendment to our current plan that is required as part of the receipt of these ARPA dollars from federal government. And what you guys have done is you have added the following projects. One is Wi-Fi at the Monroe County Fairgrounds. The other is potential for Wi-Fi out at Cars Farm Park. A community foundation project that are specific to assisting the most vulnerable affected by COVID-19. Stormwater improvements required of the bicentennial trail project. Program assistance from Baker Tilly to help us manage all of these projects. And a survey that we have commissioned for our persons who are in custody and out of custody. And the total of the additional budget, sorry, the additional items is the $2,174,400.
Questions or comments, Commissioner Thomas?
No, I appreciate that this was brought forward. It could go either direction, where the council approves it first, we approve it second, but both bodies have to approve this. So we are scheduled to have a discussion about this at the County Council meeting in June, the second Tuesday in June. I've got it on my calendar in front of me. And so I look forward to having a robust discussion and hopefully getting these items appropriated by the time we get to the work session of June for the County Council.
Thank you. Commissioner Jones?
No, I don't.
I will point out for the public that it's Commissioner Thomas who has really kind of taken the lead on all this, and I really appreciate all the hard work. Questions or comments from the public? Seeing none, call for a vote on the amended American Rescue Plan Act?
Commissioner Githens.
Yes.
Commissioner Thomas.
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Motion is approved, 3 to 0.
Thank you. Next item, please.
I move approval of amendments to the Sophia Travis Agreements.
Second. And we have Molly Turner King of our legal department here to talk with us today. Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. What is before you today is two amendments to separate Sophia Travis agreements that the council approved- that the council approved at their meeting on May 9th. The first amendment is to a 2021 Sophia Travis Agreement between the county and the Bloomington Project School. For that agreement, the project school was supposed to expend funds by the end of the calendar year of 2022, but they were unable to do so because of COVID, so they're asking for an extension till the end of 2023. And then the second agreement is a 2022 agreement with the County and Girls, Inc. of Monroe County. And this extends the scope for which they can use their funds. Originally, the agreement allowed them to use funds for their fall evening program, but after the fall program, they had some extra funds and they still had interest, so they would like to do a spring program.
Very nice, thank you. And I'll point out to the public that this is not additional funds coming out of the county, it's just a reauthorization for the use of the funds. So Commissioner Thomas, any comments or questions?
No questions, great to see these programs getting done, thank you.
Commissioner Jones?
No, I don't.
I have no other comments or questions. I would point out that every year, the county makes money available through the Sophia Travis Community Service Grants to help our social service agencies and it's, it's good to see that people are actively using these, so.
And I know for this year, the Sophia Travis Grant Committee just started meeting to get the calendar set, so service agencies should be on the lookout because I think the process for applications will soon be updated on the website and open.
Thank you, that's important. Is there any public comment on this item? Seeing none, call for a vote on the Sophia Travis Agreement Amendments, Mr. Cockrell?
Commissioner Githens.
Yes.
Commissioner Thomas.
Yes.
Commissioner Jones.
Yes.
Motion is approved, three to zero.
Thank you, Ms. Turner King, thank you. Next item, please.
I move to ratify an amendment with the Indiana Institute on Disability.
Second.
And we have Mr. Cockrell here.
Yes, this was the, one of the projects that was mentioned in the, the ARPA plan, the survey of the inmates and former incarcerated people. We had act, this has actually, contract has been approved in December or January of this year. All this does is change the effective date of that contract to the first day of June of 2023. So everything else is the same.
Great, questions or comments, Commissioner Thomas?
No questions, thank you.
I'm just glad to see this getting started.
Yes, and I want to thank the sheriff and his staff for moving forward and working with us on this. I think it'll be important as we look to create a new community kind of corrections system here in Monroe County. And I appreciate the work of Allison Howland and I'm glad that she's still willing to work with us on this. Is there any public comment on this item? Seeing none, call for a vote on the ratification of an amendment with the Indiana Institute on Disability?
Commissioner Githens.
Yes.
Commissioner Thomas.
Yes.
Commissioner Jones.
Yes.
Motion is approved, three to zero.
Thank you, next item.
I move approval of an amendment to the trust indenture for the Richland Apartments.
Second.
And we again have Mr. Cockrell here with us.
Yes, it seems like yesterday, but I think it was a few years ago, the county was the pass-through public entity for some financing for some additional, some renovation and additional apartments for the Richland Apartments, which is a senior living community. It's a, and so part of that document, part of the, the funds were to be used for the construction phase. And so once that construction phase was completed, then it was going to be into an amortization scheduled to be paid over the course of a number of years. Construction has been completed and so it's coming back to you guys for that, to kind of approve the amendment to the trust indenture because we are part of the process in order for them to get their, their tax credits and tax exempt financing. This document still does not put the county on the hook for a, a single penny of the loan or anything like that. This is purely a mechanism to help the senior living group get better financing for their project.
Thank you, questions or comments, Commissioner Thomas?
None, thank you so much.
No, I don't.
I, I think as the newbie here, I really had to have a few things explained to me earlier about what all this with this meant, and so I was very relieved to hear that this does not put the county on the hook for any additional expenditures. It's quite detailed and so thank you for everybody who answered my previous questions on this. Is there any public comment on this item? Seeing none, call for a vote on amendment to the trust indenture for the Richland Apartments, Mr. Cockrell?
Commissioner Githens.
Yes.
Commissioner Thomas.
Yes.
Commissioner Jones.
Yes.
Motion is approved, three to zero.
Thank you, next item.
I move approval of the Butler Furman and Seaford, Inc. Supplemental Number One for Design Services, fund name 2020 GO Bond, fund number 4813.
Second.
And we have Ms. Ridge.
Good morning, the supplemental is for the Cars Trail Connection Liberty Drive to the Cars Trailhead at the River Crossing on Gifford Road. The letting date for the project moved to January 18th, 2024. The supplemental is just to reflect the new letting date schedule. There's no monetary changes to the project on this supplemental.
Questions or comments, Commissioner Thomas?
Just grateful that this is still moving forward, thank you.
Commissioner Jones?
No, I don't.
I was pleased that it's not going to increase the cost with the delay that's obvious here, so yes, it's important. Is there any public comment on this item? Seeing none, call for a vote on the Butler Furman and Seaford, Inc. Supplemental Number One for Design Services?
Commissioner Githens.
Yes.
Commissioner Thomas.
Yes.
Commissioner Jones.
Yes.
Motion is approved, three to zero.
I will note that we have no specific appointments for today in terms of the announcements. I will remind residents who were impacted by the tornado that assistance, they can still apply for assistance through FEMA either by visiting www.disasterassistance.gov or by calling 800-621-3362. The application submission deadline is approaching and it is June 14th, 2023. Free COVID testing is still available at the Monroe County Health Department on, at 119 West 7th Street and also at the Monroe County Public Health Clinic at 333 East Miller Drive. We are still accepting applications for certain boards and commissions. You can apply at co-monroe.in.us. It's also the same website that you can use to sign up for the Monroe County Alert Notification System, which is especially important for weather and health-related emergencies. We do still have virtual office hours six times a month. You can find those at the county websites for the days and the times. And we have blood drives again coming up, Wednesday, June 14th from 1:00 to 6:00, Friday, June 16th from 10:00 to 3:00, Thursday, July 13th from 1:00 to 6:00 and Friday, July 14th from 10:00 to 3:00. Those are all at IB Tech and Sharif Hall at 200 Daniels Way. And as a final thing, we have extended, the Monroe County Commissioners and Monroe County Council have extended the Assistance Fund for county residents who need assistance with paying for rent or utilities. If you are in that situation, contact your township trustee for further information. Every resident of Monroe County has a township trustee and their names and contact information is listed also in our minutes and at our website. Does anybody else have any announcements to share? I don't have anything either. We do have a work session later, it is now 10:40. What is your pleasure for resuming our session? Right, I know that we've got one thing scheduled for 11:30, but I'm wondering if we came back at about 10:50 if we could get through the, what we have from Ms. Krosilius at the Planning Department. Would that work, Commissioner Thomas, Mr. Jones? Okay, we'll see everybody back here in about 10 minutes and with that, the meeting is adjourned. I will note for the record that we do not have a Commissioners Meeting next week. We will return on June the 14th, thank you, everyone.